Can you hear us now?
I can.
Yes.
Just waiting on Robin, I guess, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Got quiet all of a sudden. If he shows up, we all go home, but I guess we have a quorum, so we're not all there. Can you see the clock from where you are, Madam Chair?
I can. I'm showing five fifty-nine still.
Okay, good.
All right, it is six P M., so we might as well get rolling. I hadn't heard whether Robin was going, was not going to attend, so maybe she's late in popping in. With the board's indulgence and David, we had some unfinished business from our manually mandatory required meeting after town meeting. Do you want to take this one, David?
Sure. Just gonna see if I can turn you up a little bit. So the town charter requires that the select board be within twenty-four hours. The chairman of the annual town meeting to elect a board chair, vice chair, and secretary. Not all members of the select board were able to attend the town meeting, so those that were present elected the same slate of officers until the board could meet again, the full board could meet again, which was supposed to be tonight, but we're still short a member, so somebody tell me what they wish to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately.
I guess it would be also. It would be contrary to what the board voted the last time to do anything different than continue with the same slate. Yes.
Right.
Not to say you couldn't have.
Yeah, I mean.
A different, but.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so I mean, unfortunate, fortunately or unfortunately, that motion was fairly clear, so. I guess we'll honor that motion and as is appropriateness, we have done in the past, so we'll, we'll just have to table this again for next time. And as we've done in the past, as I am remote, unfortunately, and I can't see everyone in the room as well as I can, the vice chair with the consensus of the board should run the meeting. Does that sound good?
Oh, no. Plan on this. Yeah, absolutely no problem. So what that does mean is it will be going, any, any vote that we have tonight will be a roll call vote, because we do have one member participating remote and I'm not sure about the other one. I don't know at what point we'll mark her absent, but we'll get moving. Just let me know when you'd like me to take this over.
I think you're good to go, Karen. Thank you so much, and apologies for not being able to be present.
That's okay. Okay, thank you very much for, for everybody coming out tonight. The Lincolnville Select Board Meeting, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, six oh four P M. Before we get going, Mike, could you read the quote?
Yeah, sure. Sometimes it's easy to find one's footed when charging uphill. No one knows who said that.
Yeah, I wouldn't blame that one either. Thank you very much.
I did stumble over.
Okay, second item on the agenda, the citizens forum. Anybody in the audience would like to come to the podium and speak to some non-agenda item right now is the time? Not seeing anybody rushing up to the podium. We'll move on to the third item on our agenda, the administrative report. I'd just like to start off by expressing thanks to the election and ballot clerks that helped us last two weeks ago on the tenth, conduct the elections. Although we're not, not good without a hitch. Like have a few more people vote in the future, but so bad. The only other item I have is our winter roads all bid. In the past, we had been with a group that was bid specs were put together by Knox County. Knox County decided not to do that this year and shifted responsibilities for that to Mid Coast Council of Governments, who shifted that to or joined in with the Greater Portland Council of Governments, left off a number of communities that had been part of the Mid Coast region in that bid. But we were eligible to supposedly get the pricing that we could get with the Greater Portland Council of Governments. Salt for Portland comes either into Portland or into Newington, New Hampshire, which isn't exactly convenient for trucking to Lincolnville Main, so we have issued a bid for local vendors out of Searsport. Kind of disappointed in how well that transpired, reached out to Knox County in, I think it was April regarding this, and thought we were all sat until last week, but anyhow, good. So that's, we're out to bid. We've kept bids back prior to your next meeting, so it'll be on your next meeting, and we probably won't need roads out in July, and if we do, we have a little bit left in the barn from last winter, so we should be okay. Outside of that, I think everything's on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, meetings and announcements. All meetings are here in the town office unless announced otherwise. The Lakes and Ponds Committee meets Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, seven P M. Select Board will meet in executive session on Monday, June thirtieth, at five P M. That's to interview potential legal counsel. Town Office will be closed for Independence Day on Friday, July fourth. The Lincolnville Central School Committee meets on Monday, July seventh, six P M. at the Lincolnville Central School. The Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, July eighth, six P M. Planning Board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, July ninth, six P M. Conservation Commission, Thursday, July tenth, four P M. Recreation Commission, Monday, July fourteenth, six P M., and the Select Board meets next in regular session on Monday, July fourteenth, six P M. Thank you, David. Are there any questions, concerns, or additions to the meetings and announcements? Not seeing any. We'll move along to agenda item number five, upcoming community events. Does anybody have anything? Yeah, if you'd like to come up to the podium. That would be great.
Yeah, Susan Silverio Proctor Road. This morning, we picked strawberries in Freedom and loaded the trucks up, came back, and they are now in the freezer. We're looking forward to the Strawberry Festival on Saturday, July twelfth, and we do have a crew that will be tending to parking and traffic control.
Susan, how is the packing gonna go this year? Than what it has been?
I, we haven't confirmed this yet. Last year, we had the property behind the church belongs to Kevin Whitaker, and they were also allowed to use the Lincolnville Telephone Company property. I'm waiting for all the fields to be good and dry before I confirm those arrangements again, that that's our hope. Yeah, and we have people stationed at all the intersections for, for stopping traffic. The parade kicks off at Drake's at ten o'clock, and the kids join on their bikes at the library, and it doesn't take too long, but we'll have people stationed at all those intersections.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other upcoming community events that anyone would like to speak to? Okay, seeing no more, we'll move on to agenda item number six. We have three meetings to approve the minutes. First would be May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion. You have the board approve the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, question. Yeah, I don't know what party you're here for that, for this thing, so I can second the motion, but I don't know if I can vote on it then, because I wasn't here for the entire thing, meeting.
Okay, so you abstain from that?
I'm gonna abstain. You still got three, yeah.
Okay, we'll go with a roll call vote. Lately.
Yes.
What's your vote?
Yes.
Dee, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike will abstain, and my vote is yes. Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Those will be hard to do without Robin here.
Yeah, I wasn't here either, yeah, too.
Okay, so we will table that approval until the next meeting. The third would be approval of the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. I'll entertain.
It'll be challenging.
Okay, we'll table that one for the next meeting as well. Next item on the agenda, Trails Initiative, Leslie Devoe.
Same. Uh, no, excuse me, that should also include Rosie Gary, who's mine. She's gonna speak after I speak.
And who's that?
Rosie Gary, he's a, he's a dude in town. You must know him.
Don't know him.
Okay. So, um, I'm gonna bring in four areas of focus, and because I've often been told to keep it short, I'm gonna do it in four minutes. I'm gonna break my own record. So, the first thing I wanted to add, people have been saying, what are you up to with this, this trail initiative? And what we're doing is going historically around, looking at all of the as they covered up trails, those trails that stop and go, and, and trying to identify them, and then we're going to, our next thing will be to maybe connect them in a plan on a chart, and then rehab them if they need rehabbing, and publicize along the way, but mapping also along the way. The goal really is to have people outside, out and about with these trails know about them, and actually have that kind of be a thing that is known in Lincolnville, which is a really amazing town. So far, we've had two meetings, and we've done a lot. And we've also garnered this support of the Lincolnville Rec Commission, and we had a rolling out sort of unintentionally at the L I A. They were planning a, I think they were gonna have a bunch of regular meeting, and maybe some trail talk, which is what I wanted to go to, because I really liked that, but instead, we were allowed to bring this in and explain what we're doing. So who are between the two of us, beyond the two of us, is Eric Brooks, who's the trail builder at the at the state park, Matt Silverio, who is lives in the hills and highlands, and has really done a lot of hiking, and, well, you know him, and Jim Dunham, I think you know him, and Carrie Hardy, Jasper Guyer Stevens, who's with the Maine Trails organization, and then Dwight Emerson, and also, pardon me? Oh, right, from yeah, okay, great, thanks. And then Tom Jan Rog is going to, is interested in helping us out. Our priorities, sort of out of the gate, are safety, to have the trails be safer with signage and mapping, as I've said, and so on. Also, historic preservation is important for us, looking back to look forward. Public access, we're wanting to have lots of access points, and we want to have people with different abilities to be able to access these trails, and if they need some equipment to do them, we want to make sure that that happens. We also want to involve the public all the way through, ask their opinions. In fact, we got some really good feedback in the Q and A at the meeting last week. We also want to reassure you that we're seriously thoughtful about stewardship and about leaving leaving habitat better than we found it. I'm very serious about that, and we're also serious about including partners like Coastal Mountain Land Trust. This is also, it has to be said, a priority of the heart and soul. Group, the town really said that they wanted this kind of connection, and they, I think particularly emphasized that they wanted, and we heard the other night that they wanted trails in town to be connected, not just out in the, you know, further out areas, but for me, this way to connect mountains and farmland and forest and town, and that seems important. So what we're asking, it's, it's actually kind of interesting. We're not asking you for anything at this point, not in the way of money, and not in the way of staff, so I probably should have said that in the beginning. But what we are asking for is Robin actually is very much involved, wanting to get involved in this, and she was wondering how she should do that, whether she should be assigned to our group. And I don't know what that gives her, but I do know that that in looking at it, all these the Maine Trail Program from the referendum a year or so ago, that they really emphasized municipal involvement, and so it would be seamless if she were on this, so I don't know what she has to do to be assigned, if there's a status for that, you know?
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Is there anything else?
The last thing I want to say is there is a grant request that we may want to go after for this group that I just mentioned, and it's due September twenty-fifth, so we had no anticipation or sense that we were gonna have to move that quickly, but we, it's available. And we, it's a state grant, and I think, given the grant landscape, that we should go after it. And potentially, if we can, if we can figure out how it would fit here, I think we should make sure we do everything we can to rule it in or rule it out quickly. So.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
In that distinction, we talked about some easy, low, low flying foot. So if this is anything at all, and you're recognized, here is, here's one seventy-three, head to the beach, Young Town Road, this is Steven Pond, State Park. Here, it is across the street from the State Park, that's, that's on State Way, all the way up through here, the big hall here, there's a snow bear trail that comes through here. Trying to utilize how that snow bear trail, this comes out of Tango, this is State Park, here, this is Danny Pendleton's place, right here. And so, this is the Andrews place, and the snow bear comes across that. What we were trying to do is obtain permission and usage.
Why don't I back up and use the mic?
So, so this is one seventy-three. This is Slab City Road, and this is the Tango State, part of the State Park, and this is Stevens Con, and what we want to do is concentrate on this right here. The rest of this, we can put together with no problem, because there's already an existing trailer. They just need to be moved out and brought back so that it's usable. In the same time, there are multiple with Eric Brooks walked this just recently, he works for the State Park, like we, like we were told, and there are multiple evasives in there, and that's one of the other things they want to do is get rid of some of the evasives that are there, and if people are walking by it, it's a lot easier to do that than just abandon it. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Got a couple written down. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the legislation you referenced.
You voted on it last, last November, David?
It was la, it was last session, it wasn't this session.
This.
It wasn't this session, so I.
In November? I think you voted, was it last November? I think it was last November. You got a chance to vote, tell you, thirty, was it thirty million dollars?
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about the referendum. Okay, so I didn't know you, how you were planning to, how you saw the town planning to tie into that, I wasn't sure when you mentioned that. But then you, but you have plans to somehow tie into those funds.
Yes, by, by getting, okay, sorry, by, by planning for bringing to, to do some of this work.
Okay, so you're planning to tie those funds, but yeah, the question I had, more to point was, do we envision this trail network going through private property?
It is, it is, in one part, right here, it's private property.
Now, is that the only?
Right, the same thing with that is the only piece of private property to connect Tango to the State Park.
So right now, we're only talking that. That, right here. I know, but we're not talking about what I see on the chart. You're not thinking, okay, someday we might expand this, do trails further out into town.
Yes, we're going to do that eventually, but take the lullabying fruit first.
Okay.
Try it, see how it works, you know, see if we can make everything work, and stop. I will tell you, I talked with a group that made a trail from Thyme Mountain all the way to Union. And the law of that goes over private land.
Right, you're telling me.
With some stipulations, but there is a trail goes, goes all the way from.
By the bay thing.
Yes, trail to bay, but, and so that's something similar.
So you, okay, so you'd be following, there'd be a similar model, but you would be following.
Something like.
How to get land permissions, motorized vehicles, with municipality that are involved.
Yes.
Like our trails here.
Yes.
How we all work all that.
Yeah, find, connect, find and connect the town.
Got you, cool. That's it, thanks.
Lately? Lately, did you, did you have something lately?
No, I know, I did make it up.
There's a delay, it must be.
Probably turn off your video, so we're just getting your audio.
Yeah. Now we can.
I'll, I'm gonna stop the video just to make sure that, all right.
Perfect.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, yeah. I have nothing to add after all that.
Well, I, so that's, is that all you have?
That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Leslie. You're a group that has formed outside of the towns per se, correct? Okay, because you're not under any committee of the town. Okay. Okay, yep, yep, good. Well, thank you for the F Y I., and it would be nice to know the progress. As of right now, we don't have anything that would actually tie into that, but it's good to know that we're trying to connect the trails here in town. Now you say "we," is that a Trails Initiative group? Is that what it's called, or is there another name for it? Okay. Perfect. Okay, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything else?
That was.
Yeah, see?
So regarding the grant that you mentioned, is that gonna require town municipal participation? Is that a condition of the grant or anything, do you know?
If, if, could you come up to the podium, please?
First of all, I want to say that, that the guy, Jasper Guyer Stevens, who's with Maine Trails Organization, that is his absolute area of expertise, and that's reassuring for me. I went online and got all the information from them, and they, they lay it out, we have to go to the planning department, code office, and all of this. I mean, they laid out a lot of your concerns, and so we certainly would want to have a letter of support at the very least.
Are you asking for a letter of support?
We will if we go ahead with it. We haven't decided to go ahead. We've only had two meetings, but all of a sudden, this deadline is in, has fallen into our laps, and we're thinking, oh my God, we don't wanna, we have to figure it out, so we have our first job. Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I just ask one more question? So there was a question about Robin wanting to participate, and I would think that that would be a consensus of the board to agree to assign her to that community group, but as she's not here, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay, we'll, we'll revisit that in the future. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, agenda item number eight, heart and soul plaque display location and final report archive. Hey, Cindy.
Cindy Donovan, Tango Road. We bring this back, I think you've seen it before, but the heart and soul has a couple of loose ends, and since I'm no longer officially anything with it, I just decided to pass those loose ends back to you, and have you tied them up as well? So one of those is to find the appropriate place to put this. We've been thinking about somewhere out there, because it does, it really honors the work that so many people did and the participation of so many people, so hopefully it's nice enough that people would say, oh, yeah, I was part of that, which I hear sometimes on things that are around town. So I would love for you to figure out. Lately told me that there has to be a group consensus as to where this might go, but we did, there is the possibility of somewhere out there, like where you're waiting in line to pay your bills.
Absolutely.
Always nice to have something positive to look at.
That's a great idea.
Well, I would think it'd be in the vestibule or right out there somewhere, so that everybody can see it, and I'm, I'm open to anybody else having any ideas, but that's.
I tell you the truth, I kind of leave that today, the staff decide, because you see, you see the flow of traffic. This is how I pass the buck. You see the flow of traffic. Yeah, so you might be in a good position to decide where, on which wall it might go.
I'm sure we could put it right out there on a.
Wherever, some.
Poster column next to wherever they suggested, the Boston Post game thing, or on the opposite side of that.
Excellent. Lately, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I agree. I think either, you know, the vestibule or the lobby where folks are kind of mingling, doing their various business at the front desk makes sense to me.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. David, we're gonna leave that up to you. David, we're gonna leave that up to you. Perfect, we can put that up very easily.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Good, all right, the other thing is that we all, we have, as you know, we have a very nice, uh, final report. And my understanding is that when an ad hoc committee is no longer a committee of the town, that the reports and things end up someplace more obscure than the town website. And is that fair to say? No, no, okay. Maybe we should explain this, David. Anyway, we would like it to be accessible, I'll, I'll explain why. And then you can tell me what the nuts and bolts are, because technology, we all know, it's not my forte. The, what we would like is for this to be really available for anyone in town that wants to think about a project they might get involved in, or for groups that are doing projects. Like the Trails Initiative, to sort of say, here's the person, if I want to do trail work, it would say, yeah, it's active, it's going, and Leslie DeVoe or Rosie Gayle would be the people to seek for that. And have those contact informations. So it's because it's online and through those QR codes, it can be changed and updated. And that, um, the hope is that however the next iteration of it is, then, it was gonna be the Community Alliance, it still may be the Community Alliance, we're still trying to sort some of that out. But there will be a way for that entity to continue on. We're just not quite sure how, when. But meantime, and up until, you know, and even then, we would like that document to be someplace where it can be found. But is.
Absolutely, preserved and.
Preserved, yeah, and.
Absolutely. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I guess before that maybe, my concern with the, with the document is, we can't, we shouldn't be, in my opinion, sharing a live document from the web, the town website. The static document, the time of the project completed would be appropriate to share. And then like any other independent group in town, your ongoing would, would need to be separate. The ongoing live living document.
Yes.
Which we all want to be able to be, see and be part of, but I would, I would, I would have some concern coming with that. Or just did, or linked directly from the town.
Can we save that on the town website with, um, with the, I don't even know what to call it, would the, um, ability to manipulate the document disabled?
Well, it's two separate, it could be two separate, two separate, as of, as of the day.
I brought.
Happening on your. I'm thinking whatever the current printed version is, or whatever, that document could be available for folks. Um, and then if they want to participate or be aware of what's going on with the project going forward, they would have to go to some website or some resource document that you folks would put up. Just like Lincolnville, or any other group would have their own, uh, component.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to get clear on that, because it kind of worries me too, that there's this editable document.
Right.
And it's like as if the town could be hacked, or we would be responsible for whomever, but whatever. Inappropriate stuff on there, okay? So, and, and you think we could, yeah, we can just put up a static document as to what, whatever date, end date y'all want. And then on another server, or at least not ours.
Right.
You all would take responsibility for whatever editing or manipulation you want to do with that. That would seem to be the way to go.
Lately, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I concur with everything that has been said. I think, uh, having a live document attached to our website for a multitude of reasons probably isn't, isn't good cybersecurity, uh, et cetera. And so I think, I think what everything has been mentioned, um, by everyone here makes sense. Yeah, to, to kind of put a pin in it, um, where it was presented, and then, um, have it be archived, yeah.
But so it's, it would still be easy to find, but it would be the final document, the final report would be easy to find on the website. Because I know like when we did the solar panels, or when we did the street lighting, we had all those presentations. And I don't, they're probably there somewhere, but I've never really been able to find them. And so that's where, this is, that's where my mindset is coming from.
Well, yeah, well, I don't, I don't want to spear occupy, but that's a separate issue, it's how I'm handling.
Yeah.
Our question.
And that's, and that's.
I mean. Not buried, so someone can't find it.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's what we do there.
With that covered, I would be happy to send you.
Is there anything else? Can we? Get a motion?
I moved the final Heart and Soul Report without saying links disabled. We posted to the town website under the Special Reports section, sound good? Uh, and then a paper copy of the final report, be archived.
Second.
Moved and well seconded.
Yep. I'm on the town website, um, Susan Silverio, I'm on the town website, you just please tell me how to find the special reports?
Document library.
Yeah.
Special reports.
Document library. Town reports, auto reports, I don't see special reports, sorry.
Check in with me tomorrow.
We might.
We're looking forward to seeing that.
That's where. Haven't voted yet. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and our discussion has ended. A call for roll call vote. Lately, what's your, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, and we will, when we.
Thank you.
When we get our act together, Bob.
Thank you, Cindy.
Uh, next item on the agenda, review of Lincolnville Fish Pier and Float Usage Plan. David, do you have anything to say about that?
Sure. Uh, the harbor ordinance requires the harbor master to prepare and updated annually the Lincolnville Fish Pier and Float Usage Plan. Uh, that was included in your last packet, because the board is supposed to approve it by July first. So it's also included in this packet. It memorializes, uh, what we have down there currently. If you want something different, uh, now it'd be a good time to make that change. And they'll make, change the plan and let the public know. In essence, it just shows where our, uh, nineteen bait box spaces are, the trash receptacle, and then the tie-ups. Float, how long you can stay on each float.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Are there any, any communication on that?
No, uh, the only question I have is, we don't see any need to somehow figure in the possibility that DOTs kind of reconfigure, mess with the, the road systems, should they put them in a fairer term? Or D-Mark, we don't have to look that now, that's like.
Your way.
I think, yeah, I think it's good to keep that somewhere in the back of our minds, but they move slower than we do.
Yeah, and, and we'll be seeing, the more we'll be seeing this again.
Yeah.
Got you, okay, good enough, thanks.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Appendix B, Lincolnville Fish Pier and Float Usage Plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion at all on this? Not hearing anything? Uh, lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what is your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. The motion passes. Uh, next item on your agenda, uh, EMS agreement. David, would you like to give a?
Sure, our current EMS agreement with Northeast Mobile Health expires at the end of June. Um, but as I think everybody knows, the town of Rockport opted out of their agreement with Northeast, and they're doing their own thing. Uh, the remaining three communities have worked close with Northeast to come up with a slightly different service model. It'll be a private-public partnership, where the first ambulance, uh, will be staffed, will be housed at the Camden Fire Station, which will improve our, um, response times to the three communities. It will be staffed by one member of the Camden Fire Department and one member of Northeast Mobile Health Services. Uh, at least starting off on a twelve-hour-a-day basis, and, um, hopefully transitioning, um, relatively soon, uh, to a twenty-four-hour basis. The second ambulance that'll be available to us will be, will remain at the Northeast Mobile Health Office in Rockport, staffed solely by Northeast Mobile Health. Uh, this is a three-year agreement. Um, and then every quarter, um, we'll find out. Well, hopefully it won't take long to transition to the twenty-four-hour model, but we'll find out in advance the quarter, uh, staffing levels, and whether it be staffed by solely by Northeast Mobile Health or a combination of Camden firefighters and Northeast Mobile Health. Uh, service level won't change, we'll still have the same paramedics on paramedic required calls. Um, it's kind of a win-win situation, making the best of a challenging situation.
Yeah.
Um, looking at, first off, does anybody else have any questions before I ask? Uh, lately, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, just a quick question, you said, um, that the, they're anticipating, uh, moving from twelve hours a day and transitioning to twenty-four hours a day, and that being soon? Can you quantify soon in more definite terms?
I'll try. Um, the voters in Camden just increased their sta- their funds for staffing the, the fire department. So they have advertised, uh, positions available. And they hope to hire two additional people in the coming quarter, first quarter of the new fiscal year. And when those people are on board, then they would look to transition to the twenty-four-hour coverage.
Okay, super, that's all I had for questions.
Steve? Um, it says average response time for twenty-two minutes on page three of the agreement. Page four, where it enters the penalty phase, is all of a sudden listing twelve minutes, not twenty-two minutes. So there's a mistake in the document that needs to be addressed before this would be signed. I'm assuming those response times should, are supposed to say twenty-two oh one and on, uh, twelve oh one?
Yeah, I think they're both twenty-two for Lincolnville.
Yeah, yeah. I just, that paid, the chart on page four, need to be fixed before it's executed.
Yep.
And then the other question I had, um, they use the term Emergency Operation Directors for the three towns, but that term is not defined anywhere in the agreement. And do we know what, who those people are?
I believe the Emergency Operations, what, what did you say? Emergency Operation Directors are, um, defined in the agreement that we don't yet have a copy of from the Camden, Northeast Operational Agreement. Okay, well, I'll double check on that.
Yep. That was my two.
Mike?
I was just wondering about the, um, we're going, so we're looking at three months, uh, before. It could be, it could be as long as three months till we go to twenty-four.
Well, we will have ambulance twenty-four staff.
I know, I know, but the staff.
The, the staffing of the first ambulance that will be housed at the Camden Fire Station, when this kicks over on July one, will be Camden Fire Department and a Northeast Mobile Health Service employee for twelve hours a day. And the other twelve hours a day will be two Northeast Mobile Health.
Right.
Service employees. And the hope, dream and aspiration plan is that Camden, town of Camden will be bringing on additional firefighters that will be EMTs, and then it will go to one Camden firefighter for twenty-four hours and one Northeast Mobile Health.
And, and we, and we think they might hire some people within the first quarter.
That's.
Of three months.
That.
And then transition into.
Yes.
Do we have any, do we have anything more than, more concrete than a plan?
Uh, at this point, we, we don't, with the exception of the positions have been advertised.
Okay.
And then it's, um, everybody is, um, competing with everyone else to hire EMTs in the state of Maine.
That's why I asked, because there's a workforce shortage.
Yes, and that's why it's, uh, particularly nice that, um, we have Northeast to back us up completely. So that if, if it can't be staffed twenty-four hours a day by a Camden firefighter, uh, Northeast is, will be contractually obligated to us to have people.
Got you.
And they're also, the second ambulance has their people.
So just to confirm, the way I understand it is we have twenty, our, our level of service does not change.
Right, correct.
It's just the cost is going, is somewhat variable based on the staffing model. And that's why our recommended motion has an up to amount in it.
Correct, and the up to amount is what was approved by the voters.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Couple weeks ago.
Yep.
Ten days ago.
So if nobody else has any questions or concerns, I just want to voice my concern. And I know this is not the previous regional approach, this is all new, but there are in some cases, same players. Previously, there's a review committee that some of the players refused to attend meetings. I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about this being a quarterly review instead of a monthly review. It's not only a quarterly review, but it's the review or the report is due a week after the quarterly, the quarter ends, so it's quite a period that obviously if there are things that happen, they, they can be an emergency meeting, I get that. Personally, I'm concerned about that, and I think it's broadened mostly because of the players. And I'm sorry that I've said that, but that's what raises my eyebrow on this. So just to be clear, a different subject, but same, same situation. When, for, for twenty-four hours, it's going to be a Camden paramedic or EMT and a Northeast with a Northeast vehicle in the Camden. But after the twelve hours, the next twelve hours, it's going to be coming out of Rockport. So why would the timeframe not decrease for the first twelve hours of response?
But the way I understood it, the ambulance doesn't move, it's staffing the ambulance. But the two employees are going to be at the, uh, both, both Northeast help employees will be at the Camden Fire Station. But it's still twenty-two minutes response time, whether they're the first twelve hours at Camden with two people. Twelve hours is just, which employees, the vehicle's not moving. The vehicle's not at the Camden. Yeah, they have two vehicles, one in Camden, one in, so, one in.
Why twenty-two minutes to get from Camden to Lincolnville?
That's the.
And twenty-two minutes to get from Rockport. Um, okay.
Like till we get, till we get a track record.
Yeah, there wasn't a whole lot of. Okay, I'm just, just asking.
Trust me when I tell you that people aren't saying, no, we can slow down and go, because we've got all the time in the world.
No, I, and I'm just wondering, because that part of it.
Yep.
Was a red flag for me.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, is that lately, do you have anything else to add or, or ask or on this?
Uh, no, nothing new, I mean. Uh, no, nothing new. I mean, you know, I've, I've voiced other concerns in the past, you know, that anything new is always a challenge, you know, and I think seems like everybody's trying to figure out a scenario that we still provide service to our citizens while kind of making up for what we've been left with by another town, so you know, I think, um, you know, it seems like the review model is fairly consistent with what we had been working with, and so I feel like I'm just trying to remain optimistic that, that we can make that that work, where it didn't in the past, so. Yeah, uh, hope and optimism, I guess, I guess is what I'm going with.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, is our service doesn't change. Um, it can do nothing but get better. Um, and the, the big change is forming a new uh regional group, which we had before. Um, so we're just, in my mind, we're giving permission to make it better. Um. So with that being said, if there's nothing else that anybody wants to say or has for questions, I would entertain a motion on this.
Uh, I'll ma- I'll make that motion. Um, I, I move that the Select Board authorize the town administrator to enter into the proposed three-year agreement with the amendments as mentioned by select person hand uh with Northeast Mobile Health Services for the provision of emergency medical services with the first-year contract price not to exceed one hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there anything else lately? Uh, Steve, Mike, is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we'll, we'll actually go back to a roll call vote. Lately, what is your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what is your vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. And my vote is yes, the motion will pass. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, fiscal year twenty-six septic disposal agreement. David, would you like to talk about septic?
Sure, sure, nothing more exciting. Uh, towns are required in the state statute to have a, uh, an agreement with a septic disposal facility to accept residential septic. Um, we switched a couple of years ago to Interstate Septic Systems for that agreement. They are proposing the same cost as last year. I can guarantee you that we can't run a septic disposal field for that price or less, so sign on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for David? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve and sign the Septic Waste Disposal Facility Agreement with uh Interstate Septic Systems, Inc. for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Same. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, lately, what is your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what is your vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda, uh, the appointment of municipal offices. David, do you have anything to say?
Sure, annually, within thirty days of the adjournment of the annual town meeting, the board, to the greatest extent possible, is supposed to appoint the municipal officials. You have a various list of uh municipal officials. Uh, Bill Priest and the only one that's not one year would be the road commissioner's appointment, because that by charter is a three-year appointment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for David?
Nope. I move that the board appoint the individuals listed to the positions and the terms shown on the sheet entitled Town Official Appointment Papers and dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Moved and well seconded. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. And my vote is yes, the motion passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, board committee and commission appointments. David, do you have anything?
Yeah, so um, excuse me, a number of our committee terms uh expire at after, by the end of June. So we reach out to everybody that's on those committees who have terms that are expiring and ask them if they wish to be considered for reappointment. Uh, that is the top two-thirds of, or three-quarters of the list you have on tab thirteen. Uh, there are people that choose not to seek reappointment. We did manage to get in touch with all of them, so everybody that wants to be reappointed is on that list. Uh, the bottom quarter of that page also has new member interest. Um, that is for people in the community that have expressed an interest in being appointed to a committee. Uh, there are openings for all of the people that expressed an interest on the new member list. Uh, with the exception of, we had two people that were interested in the Financial Advisory Committee and we have one opening. And Dennis is, when you get to that point, Dennis Voda, Voda, did I get that right? Voda is here. Um, if you have questions for Dennis, and then maybe other people here that given is here as well, uh, if you have questions on new members, I would suggest the board perhaps do it in pieces.
Okay, any other questions for David on this particular motion or item on the agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move the board appoint the committee members requesting reappointment to the positions and terms set forth on the board committee and commission interest in reappointment list dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and well seconded again. Any discussions? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll, uh, lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what is your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
My vote is yes, the motion passes. David, uh, forgive me, maybe you said this, does that take care of all of those, or do we need to vote separately on the new member?
Uh, that takes care of the top three-quarters of that page.
Okay.
And then the bottom quarter is the people that have expressed interest via community interest form in appointments. And there are spaces once again available for everyone. Um, with the exception of the, excuse me, Financial Advisory Committee, which we only have one vacancy currently.
So do those separately then?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I would accept a motion, um, for the cemetery trustee. Uh, proposed term ending twenty-twenty-six.
I move to appoint Kim Clark to the Cemetery Trustee Committee as alternate member with term expiring in June twenty-twenty-six.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Lately, what's your vote?
Uh, yes.
Steve, what is your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yep, yes.
And my vote is yes, motion passes. I will accept, uh, a motion for the Conservation Commission, uh, proposed term through twenty-twenty-eight.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to appoint Sheila Paulson to the Conservation Commission as a regular member, term expiring one-twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move that to a vote. Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for a member to the Conservation Commission with the proposed term through twenty-twenty-six.
I move to appoint Justine Cunningham uh, to the Conservation Committee, uh, Commission as an alternate member, the term expiring twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll move that to a vote. Lately, what's your vote?
Uh, sorry, I missed the discussion part. I can't, I can't see who's in the room. Is Justine there?
No, no.
Uh, what other committee, can you remind me what other committees or town roles she served in?
She is not, uh, she is not serving in any town committees currently, has expressed an interest in the, had expressed an interest in the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, as well as the Conservation Lakes and Ponds.
Yep. I mean, I, I'm gonna fall back to the, if we don't, if we don't know their history. Uh, no offense to any individual, this is, you know, but I, I, I like to say hi and put a face to a name and hear, hear their experience, so it's not that I don't want to vote for her, but you know, it'd be nice to be formally introduced before we appoint someone to do important work for, on behalf of the town.
With the board's permission, should we table that until the next meeting, maybe reach out to her?
Yeah, I, I did reach out and invite her to this meeting, and she wasn't sure if she was going to be able to make it here tonight or not, so.
Okay, then I feel we should suspend the vote and we'll table it, see if we can get her to come to another meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, the next, uh, committee would be Financial Advisory Committee. We have two members, uh, there are two people that have shown interest, Stacy Parra um, and a Dennis Voda. Mr. Voda, would you like to come to the, uh, podium to say hi?
Sure.
Um, even where you live?
Dennis Voda, I live on Baloo Drive. We've been there, well, we've owned the place for twelve years. Um, but I've been there permanently since about COVID. When, when COVID happened, we moved up from Rhode Island, my wife stayed here. I commuted for a couple of years back and forth to Providence. Um, but two years ago, I was able to go fully remote, so I've now been a full-time in Lincolnville resident for two years.
Welcome aboard.
Hey, thank you. And when I saw the list of possible committees, I thought this one looked kind of up my alley and, and thought I would throw my hat in the ring. I've been, little background, I've been the operations manager for the investment office at Brown University for the last eighteen years. Um, a seven-point-seven billion-dollar endowment that has a little bit of everything. From hedge funds, private equity, whatever, so I just thought that my background could maybe help a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Are there any questions for Mr. Voda before he vacates the podium?
Can you bring part of that seven point?
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you for attending. How do we want to do this? We have two people for the same, um, more of the same commission.
Ms. Barrett expressed to me today that she wouldn't likely be able to attend tonight's meeting. She was concerned that they only had two members of the, on the committee. Uh, she said if the other person was qualified and she serves on a number of committees, she would not object to the board.
Okay.
You're in.
That helps me move forward with this. Um, okay, I would entertain, uh, a motion for, um, the Financial Advisory Committee with a term ending in two thousand twenty-eight.
I move to appoint Dennis Voda to the Financial Advisory Committee as a regular member with a term expiring in June twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, thanks, thanks Dennis for coming in.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to a vote. Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, the motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, the next, uh, committee would be, uh, Lakes and Ponds Committee. I'll entertain a motion for, uh, a term ending in two thousand twenty-six.
So we should probably pose on this one as well, it's the same person.
Yeah.
Yes, this per- this person is not here, so we'll table this one. Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
In a June, okay, so the next would be the, uh, committee would be Planning Board and a proposed term through twenty-twenty-six.
In June? Did you, we talked to her? Uh, I reached out to her and if she said something, I don't recall what she told me.
Okay.
We can certainly invite her to a future meeting.
I, I think we should. That concludes, um, wow, that's a lot.
Then we do still have, uh, openings for various boards and committees for anybody out there in live stream land. Um, we will be updating our lists, so if you're out there and you're interested in other boards, committees or commissions, um, let us know.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Community Resilience Program, Community Workshop Follow-Up Discussion.
Yeah, uh, Sunday, June first, you had a Community Resilience Program Workshop. Uh, the hope, dream and aspiration is that the four items that the Select Board had narrowed their seventy-two item list down to could be decided by the community. Uh, in the end, the community split evenly, those in attendance split evenly between uh, harbor flooding solutions and safer roads and culverts for grant application. And the group decided that they weren't going to stay in debate any longer and they passed the buck to the board to make a decision. So, it's in your laps, do you have a preference?
Hmm, well, my, yeah, my, my, my first question is, uh, what kind of timeline do we have to do? What kind of, we have to make a decision right now, or can we postpone it? Uh, but I think we're kind of up against the law, aren't we?
We're, uh, we're rapidly approaching the grant deadline, or the application deadline.
So it's gonna be tough to kick, kick this one down the road.
I think, uh, the folks from MCOG that are helping us apply for that grant would prefer a decision on June first.
Yeah.
But they'll take one on June twenty-third, if you can make one tonight. If you can't and we postpone it, I don't know, if you just tell us what you want for additional information or input, we'll try to get it.
No, I, I can't think of any additional input other than, uh, a full board, that's all. And I'm not making, I'm not saying you ought to have a full board to make a decision, I think we need to make a decision. And, uh, but it's always nice to have everyone at the table.
Steve, what do you think? Well, Lately, what do you think?
I think we should just move ahead, you know, I am grateful for all of the people that came out to that, uh, workshop public hearing, uh, and for all their thoughts and questions, um. As a side note, you know, I'm a little disappointed not to see some of the younger generation in our community there, because they're the ones that are going to be inheriting all this stuff from us. But that, I guess, is a conversation for another time, um, so you know, just based on the discussions and, uh, that were had there, um, I'm inclined to throw my two cents, uh, towards harbor flooding solutions with the recognition and my understanding that this is uh, an annual, uh, opportunity. So we could potentially next year, uh, pursue another one of the priorities as we've identified them, but just given the, the frequency and the impact, both financially to our community and the lack of response from a federal. both financially to our community and the lack of response from a federal level, uh, I think applying this grant money towards finding some solutions to stabilize uh our harbor business and uh private residence districts. Makes a lot of sense, um, and not that it isn't super expensive and problematic when a road washes out or culverts, but I, I feel like we're a little bit more on top of that in, in our ability to respond. Uh, so I guess that's for me why the harbor flooding solutions rises ever so slightly above uh roads and culverts.
I agree. Steve.
Um, both of these are really very valid options, but I think the harbor flooding solution is the bigger issue. It's gonna take more time and effort funding to get to the bottom of and make progress. And for those reasons, I concur lately to, um, move forward with harbor flooding solutions.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd echo those last two points, but, and also to point out that, yeah, there is funding available, assistance available for, uh, for grants, uh, turn culverts, roads and culverts wash out, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, this is in kind of the new frontier that we're facing, and I think we need to get ahead of it real fast.
I agree one hundred percent. I think we're all in agreement that the the choice should be the harbor for this particular round. Um, and I think we should move forward with that. David, um, I think it's, you're wondering if we need to make, if we're ready to make a decision. I think we are. But do you need a motion?
Um, I think at this point, we have the consensus. Now we need to get the grant application put together and there's a resolution that'll be, now that you've made a decision, they will get back to you to
Okay.
Sign off on.
The motion will be the resolution.
Yeah.
Lately, are you good with that? Do you have anything else to add?
Nope, that sounds great.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, Waldo County Budget Committee Caucus.
This is just more for informational purposes for the Select Board Member. Uh, yeah, Select Person Tarantino currently see, serves on the Waldo County Budget Committee. Each community within District uh, one, or any, you can only have one member from your town. So as long as Robin wishes to continue, and I believe she does, um, the other thing would be if you know somebody from the communities of Belfast, Belmont, Alboro, Northport, Waldo that wants to serve on the Budget Committee. Let him know and to show up at the July first caucus.
Uh, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Uh, does, would, if Robin wants to serve, uh, would she need someone from Lincolnville to show up and nominate her at that?
No, Robin will continue on the Budget Committee. Uh, if she, if she chose to get off the Budget Committee, uh, you all would have first choice of somebody from Lincolnville to put on the Budget Committee.
Okay, thanks. Well, second point.
But it has to be a Select Board Member.
Okay, just so you know. Oh, okay. I would make a second point. You, someone might wanna uh, talk to county commissioners, let them know that they gotta update their letterhead. It's coming off of last year.
Can do that.
Uh, they also are to prove, prove their things before they send them out. And then, then it's another one correctly. They did that with the Waldo County Tax Bill too.
Okay, if, if that's all, um, we have on that, uh, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Purchase and Sale Agreement Extension, map one, lot eighty-seven A. David, do you want, have a little something to say about that?
Yeah, so previously, the board had authorized me to sign the purchase and sale agreement with the Lincolnville Sewer District for a parcel, uh, McKay Road identified on tax map one, it's lot eighty-seven A. Um, we had some due diligence challenges and timeframe. It's coming to an end this month. We approached the district to vote an extension, which they readily agreed to. Uh, give us another ninety days. We're trying to arrange for a meeting with the regulators uh, of state like environmental regulators uh, onsite versus trying to do it by email and phone, which have been challenging. Um, and this will give us the time to do that. Nothing in the, the, the agreement has changed besides the dates, the amount of money, the location. Everything else still the same. So unless you've changed your mind.
I would entertain a motion on that if we're all set.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the updated purchase and sale agreement regarding the possible purchase of the sewer district property identified on tax map one as lot eighty-seven A.
Second, moved and seconded. Any more discussion before we move it to vote?
Nope.
Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
It's yes.
And my vote is yes, motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda, adopt, renew, amend, or rescind board policies.
So annually, we have at least these four policies that need to be considered by the board. The first is your rules and procedure that's set for um, how the meetings are run, how to get on the agenda, when to get on the agenda. Uh, conduct and decorum by both board members and public and what to do if that disintegrates or falls apart. Um, we just put a copy of what you had in the current year back in for this year, if you have some changes. Um, now would be the time.
I tend to think things have been going pretty well. I don't see the need, I don't see the need. Nothing's come to my mind that we have to change, but that's just me thinking.
I read, do you have anything?
I read through all again and I had nothing, yeah, nothing to change.
Lately, do you have anything?
Nope.
And I could not find anything that we need to change. I feel we run a tight ship and it, and I think it's because of these guidelines. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move, I'll, I'll move it if I can find it.
Oh, wow. I've moved that the Select Board adopt the proposed rules and procedures linked by the Select Board for the coming fiscal year.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, the motion passes. We'll move on to the next one, Policy on Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for Employee Wage and Benefits.
Yeah, the other three policies are duplicates from previous years, allowed by state statute to uh allow us to pay the bills, either our employees or the state send their revenues to them or pay the education costs with one Select Board Member signing off versus having to hold a meeting, so you all get together.
Is this something we can approve altogether, or do we have to do these separate?
If you want to approve them all together and somebody can make that motion, we can do it.
I will entertain a motion collectively.
I move the Select Board approve the following policies. Policy on Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for Employee Wages and Benefits dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Policy on Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for Sending Revenue collected on behalf of the states, the appropriate state agency June, dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. And the Policy on Treasurer's Dispersments Warrants for Municipal Education Costs dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? We'll move that to a vote. Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote? Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, all three pass. Next item on the agenda, it's Select Person Updates. Lately, do you have any updates?
Uh, no, nope, nothing to update you on.
Steve, do you have any updates?
Uh, I do not.
Mike?
Neither do I, I have nothing.
And sadly, I have nothing to say. We're here.
We're all, we're all the worst ones.
Okay, next item on the agenda, uh, Treasurer and Payroll Warrants, approved and signed.
I move that the board approves and signs Treasurer and Payroll Warrants.
Second, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Motion passes. Is there any other form of business before we entertain a final motion? Lately, are you all set?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Lately, what's your vote?
Yes.
Steve, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mike, what's your vote?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, we have adjourned.